Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 4th, 2015 Newmarket Town Council meeting. We begin, as always, with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin. Our second item is a public forum. We begin the public forum at 7:04. Anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Mr. Philion.
Five minutes. That shouldn't take me that long. My name is Leo Philion, three Lafayette Ave. I'm concerned about what I read in the newspaper this week and what has happened. We voted on it at the last meeting. In 2006, after several years of trying to develop the Main Street Mills, the NCDC finally had a plan and developer for the mills, but the plan required the purchase of the Eagles Building. A committee comprised of the NCDC members, town administrator, and town councilors met several times to try to purchase the Eagles Building. The Eagles Building, they had been in it for about 70 years, and they really weren't interested in selling it with what they were used to and whatever. And it took almost a year of promises haggling or whatever before they would agree to sell it to the town. Many promises were made at those meetings, including help relocating, permitting, and whatever else was needed. As soon as the papers were signed, all the promises went out the window. When the building was finally purchased, the town inspectors went -- when the Eagles purchased the new building, the town inspectors went at it and found many problems, and it took many dollars and much time in order for them to get a permit to reopen it. And they lost a lot of revenue. This is the primarily problem for their financial woes today. I hear they are now reasonably financially sound except for their back taxes. I'd like to recommend that the town council put this resolution to sell on hold and approve a committee to seek resolutions to this committee and honor the committee, the commitments made to the Eagles in 2007 by the town administrator, the town council, and the NCDC. I'm not an Eagles member, but I did belong many years ago. The Eagles have been in town over 90 years, and they performed a lot of good functions over 90 years. They went into town, and it looked like if the council goes through, that will be the end of the Eagles in Newmarket. I think it's a bad price to pay, and I would like to see this continued and see -- we did not keep up with our commitment to help them the way they did, and I just don't like to see the way it's happening now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philion. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close public forum at 7:07. There is no public hearing, so town council to consider acceptance of minutes. I will accept the motion for the approval of minutes of October 21st, 2015. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, Mr. Minister of the Vote.
I don't know. It's really -- has to do with Councilman Vice Chair Levy's comments, but I did notice that we had a considerable discussion at the time when we were talking about the engineering, the consultants that were overseeing the construction of the new sewer plant. And in that, the end of that, the first part of that is captured in the minutes, but as you get to the last part of that, they did concede at the end of that discussion that if the, you know, if it ever got to the point where there was a problem with the quality of the construction, and the supervision of that quality construction was also lacking, that the overseers, the firm that would be overseeing that construction, would also be named on the suit. And the representative acknowledged that he would be expecting to be named in the suit. That was -- that part of the conversation isn't captured in the minutes, and I thought that was sort of the -- what you were trying to get at.
Just on page five of the minutes, of the minutes of the agenda. Engineer Nick Ellis stated that if, if yet, assuming it is the project, was not constructed properly, the contractor would be liable. And they were there to make sure the project was done correctly. So my sense was, when he made that statement, which I was pleased that he made that statement, as I read that statement, he's taking responsibility for the construction being done properly that they're overseeing. Did I miss?
Well, I think he said that earlier, that that was something he said early on in the questions you were asking him. I think when he said that, all he was saying is, you know, it's our responsibility if there's something wrong with the design, and it's the responsibility of the construction contractor if something goes wrong with the actual building. But later on, but what we're paying for them for is to supervise. And I, as I recall, but the continued conversation, they eventually got to the point where they acknowledged that they would be, you know, they would not be surprised to be sued. They usually would be sued if there was some deficiency in how they supervised the construction.
He was very explicit in it, like basically saying like, "That would be on us."
Right.
And that was like the last thing he said. It should be, you're absolutely right. At the end of like page, the last first paragraph on page six, he should have something like of his admission of that to really call it out.
Because that was the point of the --
Yeah, that was, the whole questioning was looking for that statement.
Yeah, and this is just going from recollection. I think Steve made a comment which was accurate.
Right.
If that happens, everybody's going to be named, you know? And it was my goal to have him take responsibility, and I frankly thought he did by stating that. But if somebody wants to go back and watch the tape and see if there's more of a level of -- because initially, you know, I was a little taken aback when he said, and this is all from recollection, because I didn't go back and watch that part of the meeting. But initially, he was like, "Well, we don't have any responsibility." You know, I was reading his contract, and I'm like, "Well, what are we paying you $350,000 for if you don't have, you know, not responsible for overseeing the construction?" And I thought he said, "That's not," in the beginning, I thought he said, "That's not my problem."
Right, and I think what you see in the minutes reflects that earlier quote, not the last, the late quote.
So that quote right here, just so unclear, when it says that he stated that if it was not constructed properly, the contractor, ah, meaning not him. I saw him as the contractor. I get it, okay. I got it. Would be liable, and yeah, you're right. He said they would be responsible, and he said that toward the end.
Yeah, I mean, like they sort of get it sideways here, like he said the resident engineer was obligated to Hazen and Sawyer, and they were obligated to the town. He was obligated to tell construction to fix the problem, but had no legal powers over them. Like, what they don't get it is that one moment where he's just like, "If there is an issue with like our oversight, then we are liable."
And as Gary said, it was really Steve, you know, Town Administrator who brought it up.
Yeah, he said, "Everybody's going to get named."
Everybody's going to get named, and it was acknowledged here. I think that exchange, that part of it really has to be captured in the minutes.
So we want the recording secretary to add more specificity to that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because I took the contractor being, he being the contractor. No, I get it now, but I read this as he was the, we were contracting with him to oversee the work.
I thought you were going to bring it up.
Yeah, well, I, you know, when I read this, I was, you know, not to be redundant, but I saw him as being the contractor that we were hiring to oversee the work. So I think that could be clarified, Steve, because I thought he did take responsibility at the end, which I was happy about.
So she's taking notes from the video of this?
Yep.
Patty?
She'll see it.
Watching you. Anything else, Counselor Pike? Counselor Thompson?
Just very minor. On page, page six, under correspondent's closing comments, third sentence or second sentence, Vice Chair Levy said he had received a call from a member of the Education Development Committee? Economic.
Economic.
So very minor. That's all I had.
All right. Any other edits? Seeing none, Mr. Minister of the Vote.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Pickering.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Miziro.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to make the council aware of some important dates, so they can schedule some time in the coming months. Town election day will be Tuesday, March 8th, and it will be at the high school. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m., if the council votes tonight, to 7:00 p.m. Deliberative session day will be Saturday, January 30th, at 9:00 a.m., also at the high school. Unless there's some petition warrant article or a bond article between now and January, the only ballot question will be the budget. So we've talked to the superintendent of schools, and we are scheduling the school district deliberative session for 10:00 a.m. I gave you a list of all the official deadlines as well in my report. I don't review all those. I also provided you all with the council schedule for next year. And as of 5:00 this evening, I received the tax rate from Department of Revenue Administration.
Drumroll, please.
The tax rate is going to be $24.96 per thousand, a decrease of 79 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. The town will be dropping 20 cents. The local school is being reduced 59 cents. The state school is going up 3 cents, and the county is going down 3 cents. Tax bills will be due December 15th, and they should be going out by the end of the week. I just want to also take this opportunity to commend all those involved in the substance abuse forum that was put on last week. I think it was well attended, and there was a lot of good information there. And just wanted to make sure I meant, I addressed that. Just to briefly comment on the statement that, from the comments by visitors, we are currently in court with the Eagles regarding evictions because of the prop, the issue is it was past the timeline of not paying taxes, that it was, that the deed is turned over to the town. That's state law. You know, we, again, we found, we contacted them to make them aware that they owed us the taxes. This is above and beyond our notifications of certified letters and everything else that we would take the deed the next day. They, we just have now received money.
And Counsel Levy has a question, but how, according to the RSA, how many years of back taxes? At what point does it, the town claims the deed?
Six years. You have three years of leaning, and then three years after that, then we take the deed.
Sounds like being on the council. I was just going to ask if you could give a quick overview, just for all of us, because some of the councils were, you know, I wasn't on the council back, a lot of this went down. Can you just give a, I don't even know if you weren't, you weren't even there. What's basically the story? Can you just give us a real quick?
2007, I think, is what he's getting at.
Yeah, with the Eagles. What transpired? What was the deal?
I don't know. That's, this is the first I'm hearing of that there was a deal in 2007. I don't, I really don't know.
But do you know what's going on, like, there, were they not paying their taxes?
They've never paid taxes since they've moved there. Property taxes.
Never?
No.
Not since they've been in the new building?
Correct.
Okay. We're treading a line of talking about illegal issue, right?
No, it's public.
I was just trying to figure out what was going on.
So could you research the 2007 situation?
Yeah, I'll look it up. This is, like I said, this is the first I heard. Yeah. You know, we, the attorneys have been researching everything on other issues, and just that's where we are.
So they own the building?
Yes.
Let me just understand, they own the building?
Well, they did.
They did.
They did.
They didn't pay any taxes, based on what I'm hearing. And then we put a lien or whatever on the building, or?
We do.
And then after, if, after a certain period of time, if no taxes are paid, the property gets turned over to the town, just like any other.
Correct.
Yeah, just like it, so if a homeowner, just to analogize it, if a homeowner had a home, and they didn't pay their taxes ever, or for a period of time, the town would put a lien on or whatever. And then after umpteen mornings and, you know, all sorts of back and forth, the town would ultimately take possession of that property.
Exactly.
And this is a similar scenario?
Exactly the same. There's no difference between commercial or residential properties in the procedure.
It's like the conversations we've had in non-public every year.
And then, yeah, and the last question I have is, when you say never, do you, I mean, never is a long time, so.
There's no record of tax payments to the town since being on their property?
In this property?
Yes.
In the property they are currently occupying, not the old one that was behind the mills or in front of the mills.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Counsel Royce.
It's a separate issue.
Is everyone done with the Eagles?
No, I had, I had one question.
Counsel Pike.
I was just curious, have they, before you made any representation about a deal in 2007, have they, have any representative of the Eagles been to you and said, "This is what the town promised in 2007"?
No.
Okay. Is this Eagles-related? Ah, the Eagles. Counsel Thompson.
I, I'm just going to follow up on what, what does it do? Has there been any contact, any effort? $100 in the mail? I know we're beating this up, but some sort of good faith something.
This week, they attempted to, what happens usually in leaning processes is that in order to not go to deeding, and this is during the leaning process, they pay the oldest outstanding taxes.
Right, understood.
And so they just continue on that process. We're past that point where they're able to do that. They attempted to do that this week. They can't do that. You have to pay the entire amount.
By RSA?
By RSA. It's to take it back. They don't own the property. You have to basically buy it from us. So.
Right, buy it back for taxes, too.
And, you know, and?
Could do, ostensibly, they could do that.
Right.
They could buy their own property back.
They could buy the property back.
By settling the tax bill?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you, Steve.
Anymore before we move on? Anything? All right. Counsel Royce.
I just wanted to mention, you brought up the substance abuse forum, and I was going to send you some statistics, which I forgot to do, but I apologize. So a few things about it that I think are pertinent to the, you know, important for the whole town to be aware of. Newmarket, well, first of all, there were about 135 people attended, which was huge. And this is a group that's only been in existence for a couple of months, and so to kind of pull off that level of attendance was, was pretty big. Not only that, we were the first community distribution site for Narcan kits, which, again, was pretty important that we did that. 18 kits were distributed. And, you know, people from, it's the, it's the kind of thing, you don't have to give any information about why you're taking a kit, but I can tell you, just having been there, you know, it's people from all walks of life and all demographics. And then from that, we're still meeting weekly, and there's a lot of next steps. There's going to be a parenting workshop that the high school's putting on, on the 16th. We're going to do another panel, a live panel, here in the auditorium on the 17th of November. There's a parenting series workshop that's going to be, aside from the school, this is going to be something that happens at the church. I think it's a six-week series that's going to start. And there's also, through the forum, funding was provided, or because of the forum, I should say, funding was provided to the junior, senior high to start a program there for prevention. So a lot's happening, there are a lot of moving parts, but I'm appreciative to everyone who showed up at the, at the forum last week, and hope we can continue the conversation. Thanks.
Other comment, thank you, Counsel Royce. Other comments on the town administrator's report? Committee reports? Any committee reports?
No.
Counsel Royce.
So the CIP met last night to discuss, primarily to discuss the school stuff and their CIP requests. But through the course of that conversation, we did talk a little bit about one of the town requests, and it came up, so it was a town, it was a request that wasn't approved, it was for the security system at town hall. But the school also requested a security system for the elementary school. That was one of their requests. And one of the reasons it was voted down at the CIP level was because the town and school weren't working together. Now, the town and school aren't working together for the elementary school portion either. And that was one of the questions, and I asked that question. I said, "Okay, so have you guys had any conversations?" And the response was, and I just want to bring it to the attention or, you know, to the council's attention, because the response was, "Well, we can't because the vendors won't work together." So it.
We don't have a vendor, so I don't know what the comment is.
And that's exactly, and that's what I said. I said, "Well, there's no project at the town level, so I don't know."
I was just looking for, I was looking for money. I wasn't even looking for a vendor yet.
No, so I just wanted, because if we, I mean, and that was, it was definitely, I think, the consensus on that CIP committee, that we should be talking about this issue, if there's any issue that we should be talking about, it just kind of makes sense, because we are already working with our police department, and it's, you know, police and fire. So it just sort of makes sense that the town and the school would work together on this. So that's it.
Any other committees met since their last meeting? Budget hasn't met yet?
No.
23rd.
All right. You're in for some long nights.
I would ask, actually, Steve, has there been any progress on the zoning, you know, with Diane?
I haven't had a chance to talk to Diane since last week, so, about that, but other things, but I'll find out.
Yeah, maybe for our next meeting, we could just get an update on the elderly housing ordinance, if any, you know, John Connery's been contacted.
The zoning ordinance has to go to the planning board.
Correct, they're the ones who would be.
Yeah, but Diane was going to come up with something, and I, my sense is Diane was going to work with John, and then, I don't know what the process is, but I would think it would go to EDC and maybe the planning board and maybe a joint meeting or something like that. I don't know.
My, my understanding is the planning board, if they did not meet and discuss at the last meeting, they're going to be discussing it at the next one. The EDC representative to the planning board will be bringing it up there to make, to basically get the blessing from the planning board to move forward, to draft the ordinance. When ordinance is be drafted, go back to the planning board for review, and then that will come to the council.
If they have their due diligence, they need to do first before it gets to us.
Yep.
Now, if the EDC does due diligence before it gets to them, that's totally outside of our hands.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering, is EDC going to look at that, Steve, with?
I can make, I can recommend it, but, I mean, my understanding is the planning board will be doing under their auspices.
Okay. Other questions? Are there other committee reports? Seeing none, whole business. Ordinances of resolutions in the second reading. I will accept a motion on resolution 2015-16-21, setting polling hours for all 2016 elections.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Royce.
Okay, thank you. Just that I'm glad that we're going to have uniform hours for all of the elections, and I'm also really happy to see them happening at the high school. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Minister of the Vote.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Pickering.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Miziro.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Accept a motion on resolution 2015-16-22, disbanding the Advisory Heritage Commission. I know we have discussion on this, but we can't discuss until we have a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. So in the interim, since we have the first reading of this, we have had five people sign up to the Advisory Heritage Commission?
That is correct.
So we have set a panic through the community. So we should, just so that it be known, there are five individuals who have stepped up and volunteered to participate in this if we do not disband it.
Are there any other committees we need to jumpstart?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, when we got rid of the Energy Committee, we didn't have anyone signing up. So Counsel Thompson.
To somewhat piggyback that, I guess my question gets back to, I appreciate that people step in, want to do something. Some of the discussion, if someone would refresh my memory, around disbanding this is not only is, has it not been staffed, but that the purpose for which this was initially set up is no, is no longer. So I?
So you have the resolutions.
Yes, so, well, I just got those tonight, so I haven't had a chance to look at them. But I'm recalling some discussion on that, on that point, that, you know, for those five people, is there, is there something else they can, you know, I appreciate that, and I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I'm, can you refresh my memory or just talk about what we've just got in front of us, as far as why this was set up?
Sure.
And what the point is for these people wanting to get together and take time out of their busy schedules?
I'll give you just a little history and everything. The council, as you're aware, requested that we look at committees that were dormant and maybe to disband them. And the one that came to mind, we looked, is the Advisory Heritage Commission. The reasoning is, it's only met once since 2012, and the reason was to do an organizational meeting. They have not, and they have not met again since. The purpose for the committee, and I'll just, I'll read it, is that it's to survey and inventory all cultural and historic resources in town, conduct research and publish findings, including reports, establish legal for district, which we don't have a district, so. Assist the planning board as requested in preparation of those sections of the master plan, which address cultural and historic resources. Advise upon requests local agencies and other local boards in the review of requests on matters affecting, potentially affecting cultural and historic resources. When information, recommendations requested by another board agency, they have to reply within 30 days. Coordinate activities with appropriate service organizations, publicize its activities, hire consultants, receive gifts, and hold meetings, and they need to hold at least four times a year a meeting, and may acquire in the name of the town gifts for their purpose, and the council has to accept it. So that's what they're there for. They haven't met. I know at one point they were active with certain planning board cases, they would send it to them for comments, and they would submit comments back to the planning board. The last, the other thing, prior to the organizational meeting, the only thing they met for was a 79E application, and that was for the mills. The second 79E application just went directly to the council.
Because they didn't exist at that point.
There was no membership, right? That's where we are, I mean.
Would it be possible to table this? I mean, I think it would, it would have been very helpful to the discussion if some, I mean, I find it hard to believe that it's purely coincidence that five people applied to join this committee at the same time, and it.
It's not. It's because we're disbanded.
Right, no, but I mean, also, I suspect some part of that was involved, well, it doesn't matter. It would be nice if some, some or all of the people that would like to congregate into that committee would appear before the council and tell us what they are planning to do, because I have no idea at this point why the sudden interest. And I don't think we should keep the committee going just because somebody doesn't want it to end unless there's some purpose for the committee to be meeting.
Counsel Levy has a line on.
So my first, my first year on the council, I was named to be on that committee. We met once, and it was, you know, a pretty uneventful meeting in general. So I'm reading here, Steve, and it says in number B, "Establish the legal basis for a district," I'm assuming a historic district, "in preparation of historic district ordinances prior to the adoption or amendment." So if I, if I'm reading this right, so correct me if I'm wrong, which I'm hoping I am wrong, was this only created for the downtown to create a historic district? Is that the only purpose of the Advisory Heritage Committee?
No, it's not only for the district, but it's also to wait, to provide input on projects.
But is it?
But in 2000, I think Gary's getting on this.
Okay.
Counsel Royce on something.
Yeah.
I think that, I think you are right, 2000, when they initially did it, I think the impetus and his name's not on here, but he probably spent a lot of attention on it. I think that was like the primary driver from conversations I had.
So the only reason I'm asking is because if, if the purpose of this committee is to drive toward a historic district, I think, based on what transpired, somewhere, oh, I don't know, two thousand six, five, six, seven, somewhere in there, when there was a lot of, I'm trying to think of a nice way to put it. There was, there was a lot of controversy at the council level over the historic district. In fact, it did get voted in, and then it was subsequently disbanded, as memory serves me. So, it never actually took, took shape. So, if it's to only create a historic district, I would say, I don't, I didn't, I don't feel that that's going to have a lot of support, and I don't think, at least based on what has happened before, there's going to be momentum for that. If it has more to do with coming up with some kind of design standards and other recommendations to the community, which I don't see here, but I'm asking, you know, then it may have some use, and if not, what, you know, what purpose would they have, other than for historic? Because if people signed up, you know, thinking that this was going to be, you know, making recommendations for how the downtown should look, but it's really there to create historic district, I don't think that's going to happen, at least based on what I remember happening, it was very difficult time.
So, I'll let you answer, but, I mean, I would say that its purpose is not just the historic district, but I think that was the, like, tacit purpose, it's not written in there.
And I think, to your point, where to comment on design standards, I think that falls under the, to advise upon requests to local agencies and other local boards, as well as assistant planning board, in preparation of those sections of the master plan, so...
Does RSA six seventy-four, colon forty-four A, allow them, like, what does that do? Like, that's what they have their authority under, right?
That's the Heritage Commission. That is, if you were to have a true historic district commission.
Okay.
Six seventy-four forty-four.
So, if they were formed under that RSA, seems to me that the entire, like, the purpose of it was for the historic district.
Well, that's why I'm saying, because as I read this, it said, "Including reports to establish a legal basis for a district, and preparation of historic district ordinances," which leads me to believe that it was to do all the due diligence to, you know, implement it. They did, I think, find for establishing a historic district. And then, it became very controversial. There were a lot of, there was a lot of people on both sides of the issue. It was, like I said, it got voted in, and then it got disbanded. So, I don't know if that's the real purpose of it, and I'm looking at the RSA, and I'm looking at what number B says. If that's the case, I don't know what the point of keeping it is. If it has more flexibility than that, then I'd like to know.
So, let's do a quick poll of the...
Yeah, I just want to, real quick, that resolution, that section ABC, the letter section, is verbatim a copy from the RSA. I just pulled up the RSA, and it's...
So, survey and inventory all cultural and historic resources, conduct research and public findings, including reports to establish the legal basis for a district. They're not saying for a historic district, but they're saying for a district. And then, the next line says, "In preparation of historic ordinances." So, is it solely to create a historic district?
No, it's also to advise land use boards and other boards on heritage and cultural issues in the community. That's what they...
That's what the RSA is.
Okay. And that's also, yeah, they, like I said, they just cut and paste from the RSA into that section of the resolution.
I would say, I don't think it's under the authority of the RSA, and we're getting way down a rabbit hole now, for them to be the ones that are authorizing design standards, I think that's planning board.
It is. That falls under the assisting the planning board, and other land use.
And based on that, I don't understand, you know, unless somebody...
So, we have councillors that have said they'd like just to hear from those individuals before they make a decision on this. I know Council Pike said that. Just a quick poll, do people feel like we can vote on it now, or we want to wait and hear from those individuals? I don't know, what do you think?
Who?
Council Thompson.
I could go either way, my tendency is to just, is to vote on it tonight.
Council Weinstein.
I'd like to hear from them.
The only thing I'd say is if, if they wanted to come here tonight, and we're voting on it, why aren't they here? If it was, you know, so, I tend to agree with Amy, if we want to set up a criteria that next time, if they don't show up, you know, we vote on it, it's not going to be the end of the world, but...
And just for the record, we did inform all the applicants that there may not be a committee to appoint them to, if this goes through.
I had two of them call me.
Yeah.
So, Council Burns.
A little while ago, I was going the other way, with saying, "Wait, and have them come here," but if they were informed, I mean, they could be here now, and letting us know why they want to keep it going. So, I kind of feel like they should, I don't know, I think I can vote on it tonight.
Council Pickering.
I don't have any problem having them come in and talk with us. I will say, while I have the mic, that this is not the first time that a town council has reviewed all of the committees that are out there, and made decisions whether they are, stay active, or get shut down. I'm not advocating that, but I have, I have no problem with them coming to talk to us.
So, since I'm the tiebreaker...
Could you, well, you can tell what your vote is, but I, would you be able to tell us what the two people that called you had to say about the, what their thoughts were?
One was basically just saying, like, "Hey, we've got people, but we couldn't get on this agenda for their people to be voted on," because they didn't get their things in by the Wednesday noon deadline.
Please understand, when I say that, it wasn't like it was one o'clock Wednesday.
It was Friday.
It was Friday.
So, we had already actually gotten the link to our packets at this time, like, the email was...
It was done, yeah.
And the other one was basically feeling like, I think they were getting railroaded, like, that they were basically kept off the agenda on purpose.
And it wasn't.
So, why didn't they come in? I'm just curious, did you suggest that they come to speak?
I cannot pretend that, yeah, well, I said that we were going to be voting on this, but that we would, I instructed the town administrator to let us know of the individuals who had signed up, so that that was part of the conversation that people now had signed up for.
And I mean, and just for, we've been discussing this for a while, and that's why we have two readings on resolutions, is so you have the first one to inform people, and then the vote on the second one for the action, so...
I changed my vote, I vote, we'll bring it up now.
If it was important, then...
Yeah.
And a lot of the names on the list are, have been around, and are familiar with how the process works, so...
And I understand, too, maybe some, some people couldn't get here because of other things, but maybe one or two could have.
I mean, I get, like...
Or an email.
Or something, yeah.
I mean, I got, so I did, I got the two, I got a phone call and an email, basically saying, like, "Hey, don't disband it, we want to do something with it."
Can committee, I mean, let's, let's, this isn't creating a rocket ship for...
Is the world going to change if we wait, I'm meaning...
Is the world going to change? Well, no, the world, what I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, this, to echo what everybody said, you know, this has been in process for a while, there is a process, it has had no activity for X, Y, Z. If for some reason, a heritage committee needs to be reappointed for some reason, or people feel strongly about it, it could be, I suppose, right?
Or some other type of committee.
Or some other, something that is more clearly outlined, I mean, I just don't, I think...
They can come back and tell us what they want to do, and then we'll figure out if this is the right committee for, to exist for that purpose.
Yeah, I think, I'm ready to vote on this one tonight.
I'm fine.
All right, well, I'm outvoted then, because I was like, I'm sorry, I have no love lost for the committee one way or the other right now, but, like, I wanted to, like, I would have given them the opportunity to come in, but that's just me.
We did.
Any other discussion? Oh, I can hear the voicemails and emails I'm getting right now, as we speak.
Don't be afraid.
Mr. Administrator of the vote.
A vote of aye is in proving the resolution, just for the record. Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Pickering.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Levy.
Aye.
Council Nazaro.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
So, new business in correspondence, town council to consider nominations, appointments at elections. Conservation, I will accept a nomination for the Conservation Commission of Patrick Reynolds.
I would make the motion to approve the application of Patrick Reynolds for the Conservation Commission.
For the term that expires March twenty eighteen.
Exactly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Reynolds in the audience?
Yes.
Would you like to speak? Would you like to say anything?
Only that I would like the opportunity to serve on the Conservation Commission, and I appreciate your vote tonight.
Well, thank you very much for signing up.
We appreciate you coming.
Who was leaving, or left? I think there was a...
There was one opening.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, you're the wrap, I should like.
It's okay.
Mr. Administrator of the vote.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Pickering.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Levy.
Aye.
Council Nazaro.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Right, ordinances and resolutions in the first reading, and this first one, I will accept a motion to suspend, well, should we do that first, or should I read it first?
Read it first.
Resolution two thousand fifteen sixteen dash twenty-three, approval of the fiscal year twenty seventeen budget. Whereas, the town administrator submitted his budget for the fit, next fiscal year to the town council on October fifteenth, twenty fifteen, and whereas, the town council, after reviewing the proposed budget and making various changes, desires to forward the municipal budget to forward what? To forward the budget to the municipal budget committee? There's a missing word.
Now, for the municipal budget committee, proposed budget.
Oh, there we go, for the municipal budget committee, a proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council, that the annual budget for the new, town of Newmarket for fiscal year twenty seventeen, submitted to the town council by the town administrator, is amended and recommends to the municipal budget committee, for its review, the following appropriations. General fund, six million eight hundred eighty thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars. Special funds, one million five thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars. Enterprise water and sewer funds, two million one hundred ten thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars, for a total of nine million nine hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars. First reading, November fourth, and I will accept a motion to suspend the rules, so we can vote on it tonight.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on suspending the rules. Normally, I would say no, but...
You have to do by November fifteenth.
And we had, like, four meetings. So, Mr. Administrator of the vote.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Pickering.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Levy.
Aye.
Council Nazaro.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
I'll now accept a motion on the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Clerical?
Yeah.
The vote also will be the recommendation of the council in the, in the Warren article, so, it will say, recommended.
By the council.
By the council, by this tally.
It's not really, just for my final, the amount that we, we are voting on, what, what increase does that represent over the twenty sixteen?
Twenty ninety, twenty...
Was it just about three percent?
It lowered a little bit, wasn't it?
About a three something?
I'm pulling it up right now.
It was like twenty thirty-four, or something like that.
It was originally around five-ish, and then I think it got cut by about a buck thirty, a buck forty.
Two point nine two.
Two point nine two, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, three point five three, for the overall expenditures, net appropriation will be two point nine two, taxes, one point four four.
Just one, can I ask one quick question, Steve? Without water and sewer in that number, do you, do you know what the town, what it went up? Is it, is that hard for you to do?
It is, and...
Okay, no, no, I just didn't know if you had it there, because you have all those things in, in that computer of yours.
I know it went to, like, six thirty-four? Went from, like, six twenty to six thirty-four?
Yeah.
Fourteen cents.
Six thirty-three, yeah.
Six thirteen cents.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Administrator of the vote.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Pickering.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Levy.
Aye.
Council Nazaro.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
So, other resolution in the first reading, resolution two thousand fifteen sixteen dash twenty-four, relating to the Historical Society property stone church. Whereas, the town of Newmarket owns the stone school, ownership will revert back to the historical district on December first, twenty sixteen, and whereas, the Historical Society desires to continue the town's ownership of the stone school, and whereas, the town will issue a fifty-year lease agreement to the Historical Society for the stone school, now therefore, let it be resolved. The town council does authorize the town administrator to sign any deed, agreement, and lease relating to the stone school. First reading, November fourth, twenty fifteen. We'll vote on it next meeting. Probably wants to say relating to Historical Society property stone school, in the heading.
Oh, yeah, it does say, I see what you're saying.
Correspondence, including comments by town councillors.
This is your record? Okay. So, I just wanted to let the council and the public know that the Newmarket Community Education Partnership, which is a group that raises money and distributes that money in the form of grants to programs in town that support kids, so the recreation department, school, and other organizations, we're having a big event fundraiser called Newmarket Eats, and that's next week, on Tuesday night, the tenth. Tickets are available on our website, and the proceeds go to Newmarket Kids, so, that's all.